C C C. Hey. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead. Thank you so much.
Very good. Yes, yes. Well, as I was saying, we, I have been in Villa Alta Gracia in the water purification system since we opened back in October two thousand twenty and it has been great. I'm always very excited to to talk about the the different project, but this project of the water purification system where I have where I have the privilege to be, I am involved in the administration and the production of the water and the administration of the whole water purification system and it has been great. We just to see the evolution of of everything there, the distribution of the water. And when we first started with one truck, you know, going to different places, to different communities beside the community where we are, where the building, our building is, and having to buy another another truck because of the need of distribute more water, of spread and touching more more people. And right now, we even have the 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 need of a third truck. So we are able to spread more to reach to other communities around just our little community, but also the town of Villa Alta Gracia. Our little community is about three hundred families. And I always say that Dominican families are pretty big size. So there's a lot of people, there's a lot of kids, and and they are drinking good, drinkable, safe and good drinkable water. And and you see the pride of of the people. You see the pride of the people. They talk about it, they how they feel about it, having having this water purification project in there, but they also the other projects. And we are right now, one of the biggest employees of the whole Villa Alta Gracia, of the whole town. So that's that's something that we've had the the opportunity to to do over there. And we are hoping and looking forward to keep spreading, keep making the distribution of the water bigger, so we can hire more people from the community, taking into account that this is a community of seventy-two percent of unemployment rate. We we hope we can, we can help a little bit more in that, in that way. But the community, the community, I see how they talk. I have, I've had dozens of testimonies of people talking about, you know, how how great it has been to have the water system, to have the other project and and just the water, not to drink whatever water, but to drink good, safe water and not having to go to the hospital because of a lot of parasites and bugs in the water and a lot of other disease. And we feel very good. And we always say it's not, it's not something from Christian and something from Felix or the guys that work there is something bigger than that. And there is a a big, big group of people, you know, praying for us, supporting, talking to us, asking about things in the community, how they can be involved. And and that's something we really, really appreciate. And we, you know, we keep telling people to keep praying and to keep supporting us as well and to keep asking and texting and voicemails. We love all those. So we can keep sharing everything that is going on here in in the projects.
Very well, Mr. Felix. This is amazing to hear all of that from Felix. And I can tell you that Felix has been doing not just a wonderful work, but a hard work. I know for a lot of you, it's very usual just to take your car and drive every day to work. For us, that's not as usual. We usually, you know, go close by to our work. Felix needs to drive very early in the morning every day, that same road that you have taken with us to Villa Alta Gracia and to go and spend the whole day over there. And then coming at night, at home, literally at night, because Felix leaves Villa Alta Gracia at five, and most of the time with the traffic and the stuff like that, arrive at his home at night. So I I want to run off everybody. Thank you Felix for your sacrifice during this year and two months. And and like you say, how wonderful things have been there, starting with just three guys and now going up to eleven and being the bigger, not one of, but the bigger employer of that whole community is something amazing, because yes, the unemployment rate, but at the same time, the kind of job that we provide, where we are equipping people with a skill. I mean, we are teaching them. And so later on, they can go to another water purification system, or they can go into another places. Felix also have been teaching some of the guys how to do the closing and the in the books of of the water purification system and a bunch of other stuff. So very excited about everything that is going on in there, how prideful the people are of, wow, this is in our community. I mean, we love to invite the the people from the stores to come and see the water purification system every time that we have like a new customer, a new person that wants us to take water to them, whether it be in a store or or a pastor, we like them to come and see the whole water purification system, because it's like nothing that they have seen into into all of that community around Villa Alta Gracia. So very excited with everything that is going on there. Very exciting that we have good problem. And the good problem is that we already need another truck. So we have one, we had the problem that we need another one. Now we have another problem because we need another one. So in 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 Villa Alta Gracia, I mean, sorry, in Los Arca Rizos, we have three, and that's as much up as we're gonna go. But it's 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 amazing how fast they have grown. And in Los Arca Rizos, we didn't, we didn't need three trucks until we were almost four years old. Now, in Villa Alta Gracia, things are going faster. And that's something that I I I'm very proud of. And I, of course, thank Felix and the group of guys that have been working, working there. Just keep on going with Villa Alta Gracia. And I gonna go and then come back to other things. But in Villa Alta Gracia, thanks God, we have keep working with the vocational school. And if you follow our Facebook page, Lighthouse VR, recently, we post pictures of the teams that have been there this this year, working in the foundation of the, if you have your your mute, your. Here we go. Thank you, Felix. Of the teams that have been there. So we have been sending pictures. And as you see, we already have leveled the ground for the floor of the vocational school. And we are gonna be able now in in December, a team that comes this weekend on the on the fifth, they arrive Sunday, to be able to pour the whole floor. And then the teams in January, February, March, and so are gonna be able to lay the bricks for the first two classrooms. There are mechanic and 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 electrical. So we're gonna be doing the walls for those rooms with the teams. We are not having that teams that much from Canada, but we are having the whole full of team coming from the States. So hopefully, by the the summer, we can have those walls of that first floor done. And then we have been able to keep on working. And and we have sent some pictures of that, too, of the first attention clinic. And that is something that is very in the heart of a lot of people, including the people from Iowa that are joining us. There is in their heart to to do a medical facility for that community that so much needed. And the pandemic has brought the need almost, I mean, imperative, more present for us, because a lot of the the problem that we have more than other communities is that we didn't have the vaccination, we didn't have a place where they where they can go for vaccination. And and so before the pandemic, we were thinking about the clinic. But the pandemic has made us like, you know, imperative to to talk, to to raise awareness of the fact that that we need a first attention clinic. And so those teams from Iowa, teams from Iowa are gonna come and hopefully do the foundation for that clinic. But we already have the 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 surrounding safety walls done. If you remember, some of you that have been there, that was a land, piece of land donated by the community. So it's actually in the lead field of a baseball diamond. So we needed to do this wall to to protect the whole thing. And so that's done. And we are gonna be able to start with the with the foundation. So like a friend of mine would say from from Cleveland, work is available. And then, of course, I need to share with you what has been going on in Los Arca Rizos, especially with the school. And and of course, a lot of praises are gonna come from there. First of all, you know, we get the pandemic that hit us, we need to, we needed to go virtual, like a lot of you kids and your kids and and universities. And so we had the problem that a lot of you don't have, and is that pretty much eighty-six percent of our kids couldn't connect to the internet. And so because they didn't have equipment to be able to connect to the internet. So we draw that crazy idea that we thought at the moment, to raise up funds to buy tablets for almost one hundred and forty kits. And so we had all the money to buy all the tablets needed. And so we gave tablets to all the families that needed tablets. Sometimes they were like Felix's kids, we're using one tablet for 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 both girls and sometimes for three. But at least, we had all the families covered. So they were able to, the kids were able to connect and do their classes at the at the at the school. And so that way made us separate, you know, the the small kids from big kids, so they can share the the tablets. And so that went so well, that we were very positively surprised of how good the the kids were doing, you know, away from away from the school. However, we also sense at the same time that it was not the kids, it was the parents, that they were eager for the kids to go back to the to the school. So this, the last school year, everybody, even by January, February, was, you know, wondering, are we gonna send the kids at least for the for the for the end of this school year? Well, it didn't happen. But it did happen that in September, we were able to receive all the all the kids, you know, again, at our school. And we are so amazed that, yes, we receive all the kids that we have previously before the pandemic, and then we receive one hundred and seventy-nine more kids this year at the school. So the school grew this year. And so Rebecca was asking me, you know, how busy it has been. And and the whole business has been trying to accommodate the kids, yet having the social distance with the with the pandemic problem, but at the same time welcoming those one hundred and seven kids that we have knew at the at the school. As you may remember, what what did happen a couple of years ago was that the government here built some schools around. And so there were some classrooms available. And so some of the parents took their kids to those public schools that were either closer for them, or they thought an advantage, you know, to have their kids in those new school, public schools, where they perhaps didn't have to pay a little bit, like we charged then, as you guys know. And and then those kids are coming back now. So we have, we always knew that that was gonna happen. And we know that even next year, more kids are gonna come back. So we will have to keep adjusting and and keep being safe, you know, with the with the pandemic, that it looks like we're gonna have it for a while around the world. So so that has been happening with the with the school. As I said, we have been blessed that some of the teams came back this year and and have been working. We we haven't have much contact, direct contact with the with the kids during vacation Bible school, or or they play with the kids like we usually do. But that that we are looking forward to next year and and being able to to go back to that with probably some kind of safety, you know, probably wearing mask. The kids are wearing masks at school. And so we're probably gonna wear masks as we are with the kids. And we'll see how everything goes, starting in January, February, and and so on. But we have most of the US teams coming back. And I know that Rebecca and the I and the I teams group is talking about, you know, open up for for other teams who are coming. So we are looking forward to that. But but we are so grateful of of so many things that we were able to continue, even without teams that, as you know, are the heart of 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 the project. I mean, teams are all, they bring the 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 people, they work hand to hand with us, they, we do the the, like I like to say, the demonstration and the proclamation of the gospel, and then the funds that the team leave. So I cannot deny that some things we needed to, you know, to stop it or to leave or do less than what we usually do, because we have been for sure hurt by the less, not lack of, but less funds coming to to the to the lighthouse. But we we have survived in a in a good way. And and now we are looking forward to to keep growing the same that we were growing before the the pandemic and to keep reaching out to so many people that are eager to to hear what we and the pastors that partner with us have to say after showing them. I am a firm believer of the say that goes, don't tell me how much you know until I know how much you care. And for sure, the pandemic has helped us through your help as well, through your partnership, to to show people that we care. And we we were able to give food as the people were not working at the beginning of the pandemic. We were able to provide masks when mask was a big problem around here in the communities that we work with. We have been able to provide water at a very low cost that nobody could say, oh, no, I don't drink good water, because I don't have money. That does not happening anymore. And so we have, we have showed people that we care. And so I know that they are eager to to hear what we have to say. And and for sure, we are eager to show the to share the gospel with them. So thank you for this partnership that we you all have for us, with us. Thank you for your prayers. Thank you for your support. It's been very humbling for for all of us. And Felix was saying, you know, how we know, and and we have shared that with the community, we know in that you have your own issues, your own problem with the pandemic and everything, losing your jobs, or working less, or whatever, yet you have keep, you know, supporting the work that is going on at the lighthouse. Rebecca?
Define that unmute button. You think I would know by now, right? Thank you, Christian. Thank you, Felix. It is incredible to hear just the ongoing work. I never fail to just be amazed at God's provision and God's goodness when I hear stories. And I am just so thankful for the opportunity for us to get together here tonight. I would love to open the floor here for some questions. If you guys have anything you want to ask, I think I would actually really love to keep the video rolling in case there are questions that might be applicable to other people who would listen to or watch the video later. It will only go out. It might go out, the link might go out through our e-blast, which is the email that goes to our our donors. So anyone involved in the program, that is. So yeah, open the floor for, you know, ten minutes here and and just ask, ask away.
Hey Felix, can I ask, as you deliver those, do I assume jugs of water to different towns? Are you, are you selling that to different villages? Or and secondly, how do you, as it were, present the gospel, just happen to be one on one when you meet with different people in the different towns? So kind of twofold question. When is distributing that water, it's in jugs, how do you qualify who receives it? Do they do they pay for it, or it's just a gift? And how do you accompany that with the gospel?
Are you there, Felix? He's looking for the mute button. Okay, I'll go. Can everybody hear me? Okay, so the idea with the water purification system is to provide drinkable water at low cost. So it does cost to the families that we provide the water, too. However, for example, when you buy a jug of five gallon water, it costs like a dollar fifty Canadian. We are sending it for twenty cents of a dollar to the community. So it's to maintain the cost and not having to have your church or other churches. Well, you help us with the water purification system, now help us to buy the filters. Now, that's why why I was saying that nobody can say that they are not drinking drinkable water because of of the cost. That's one. The other, the other thing is, we, like you partner with us as a church, we partner with us with churches in the Dominican. And so the the jugs are taken most of the time to the churches, to the pastors, and to also some stores. But the that's what I was saying about that we are looking forward to have the opportunity to share the gospel with with many people. Right now, people come to the the median community, the median community, they come to the water purification system, and they are just seeing that that we care. We haven't had much the opportunity to to share the gospel with them as we will, and as as the pastor will, because they also go to the churches to get some of those jugs. So that's the way that that has been done. But the 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 water purification intention is, look, we care. And and I remember when I talk about the water purification system that in in Los Arca Rizos was one of the last things that we did. However, the water purification system was what got us closer of the community than anything else, even though we were providing education for almost twenty years, and then vocational education as well, and sports facilities for the community. It wasn't until we built the water purification system in Los Arca Rizos, until people kind of got it, like, these people really care about us. And so that opened opportunity. And when I talk about the 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 demonstration of the gospel, is that the demonstration bill of this huge window of opportunity of, you know, tell me whatever you want. I I tend to say that it still works to go door to door, knocking doors and ask people, can I share the gospel with you? But what has been effective in my community is to do this kind of things that you see that we do with the water purification system, with education, with vocational school, with housing. It's when 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 that happened, people come to us. When you meet the need, people come to us and say, you know, why you do that? And with that, when that without why, opens up an amazing opportunity to share the gospel. Another question that was really good.
I have an easy one, Christian. How many teams, how many teams are you expecting this year? None from Canada, or maybe one or two, but?
We are expecting eleven teams, eleven.
Okay.
That's 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 amazing. We have five total in two thousand and well, it's gonna be six with this one that has come. So we are expecting eleven teams. And you never know, because we have, for example, the Ian Saxton from New York, and another team from Georgia. So it it could be thirteen, not the the twenty-three, twenty-four that we had with the whole teams coming from Canada. But but eleven is not bad. Thank you, James. We were, as Lisa there, we were, we were very sad when when the decision was made. And I know it has nothing to do with you guys. I mean, you guys made decision, Jane, but when you guys needed to say that you were not gonna be able to to come. And and so looking forward to two thousand and twenty-three will be. Thank you, thank you.
So, Christian, since you mentioned us, so I was interested to see Kelly join. She's the one who introduced us to I teams fifteen years ago. My email started with her in two thousand and six. And what an incredible journey that has been and just seeing the leadership of of Christian and then Felix bring vision into reality, as just in seeing God's hand along the way. It's been incredible. And we're just so honored to be part of that story. But I'm just curious, because I know that we we may want to come, but we want to work with our the Canadian coordinator, I teams. Do you have any indications on what would open the way to for Canadian teams to start coming down? Just would be really curious to know what what they're looking for, so that I know there's still a lot of uncertainty in the world, I get that fully. But just curious if you have a sense about that.
Now Jacob is working really closely, like Jacob works right in the office. So Jacob, do you have an update on travel? That might be, I mean, maybe there is no update, but maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, so I'm not the chief one, like you, Sheila would be the one who you guys would know most doing that. So what I remember, we're currently kind of have a pause until Easter at the latest. And then during basically kind of the the short condensed version is that while we've been, well, since since we shut teams down and at the beginning of the pandemic, in March two thousand and twenty, we've used the time since then to really look as to what we want to like kind of reimagine teams and what we really want to, those teams and those relationships look like going forward, and how we can kind of grow and do better and and have a and not just go back to the status quo just because it was. And so take it as a real opportunity. So I know Sheila has actually invested a lot into a lot of really revamped training for what we what want to see from teams that leave through international teams. And so that's kind of the the short condensed version there. But if you want more follow up, then Sheila would be happy to get in touch.
For for what, I know that Lisa, you were talking about, we're on the For for what, I know that Lisa, you were talking about, we're on the I team standpoint. And you also kind of mentioned us. And now the Jacob say, you know, obviously, always is going to be I team position. It could be same than us. For us, it can be different. For example, when Jacob talk about, you know, changing, renewing, revisit. I am very firm believer of, I say there is going in North America, that what is not broken, don't fix it. For us, for us, it's worked really great. And we are looking forward the the I team, one way or the other, to open up the possibility for people like Kings, you know, to to partner with them and then to come to work with us. I remember that first twelve kids team that came and 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 see, you know, dreaming about ten years and what is going to happen from there to ten years. And and now see everything that has happened with the communities that we are working, but also with your schools. And in in every like video of I teams, we have been able to have one of your kids sharing what it meant for them to 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 come to the lighthouse and how their lives have changed because of that trip. It's amazing. And then even to have, you know, kids like James, kids to wanting to come even by themselves to to work with us and and to share the gospel in the Dominican has been amazing. So looking forward for that to to keep happening for many, many years.
Yeah, we do get questions from our parents and our students with excitement, looking forward to when we can return. So just know that. I guess my only other question is, I know that the pandemic has been really demanding on leaders. I just wonder how you and your families are doing, Felix or Christian?
I don't know if Felix connect again, but it has been very difficult. It has been very difficult. I cannot deny that, you know, that I'm a very straightforward guy. And and sometimes I needed to spend, I remember, not now, but three days in the States waiting to see my family. My, so it's, 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 it has been very hard. I have right now, the the mom of my stepsister is in the hospital and she has been in the hospital for for almost a month. And and then during the pandemic, you know, my uncle die very close to me, almost like a brother because my, he grew up with us. So it has been very difficult as a family. And so that's, that's, that's why it's so emotional to be able to to work and to help people. You know, as the pandemic was heading, because we were head as a family ourselves. So and and I know, I don't know, Felix is is still not there. But for Felix and 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 Fifi in Haiti and how also has head in Haiti. And and because in Haiti, the news come, almost don't come out. But things happening with the with the pandemic very, very hard. So it has been, it has been difficult, it has been difficult. You, you always talk and you especially, they have the opportunity to travel around the world. How when in North America, something is a simple cold in 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 a mother part of the world and there were countries, it's a, it's a pneumonia pandemic. It's it's so difficult because of the accessibility to hospitals and medication and all of that stuff. So it it pretty much, for for instance, the testing didn't came available here until, you know, almost October after the pandemic. So now we have cut off when the big countries are let it go. And now we can do the testing even at the lighthouse. When teams come, they can do it over there. But the vaccination, we we were blessed. We got a vaccine from from Canada, I mean, sorry, from China. But it was so difficult to know that the vaccine was available in some country yet was not available for the Dominican Republic or other countries. So thank you, Lisa. Another question?
Christian, I wanted to mention, we want travel to open up as badly as you guys do. And we will, you know, as soon as it's, it's kind of deemed safe to do. So I'm not even sure what the whole process is. But we can't wait to get Kings back to the lighthouse. And we will get you guys there as soon as we can, absolutely. And I think what Jacob was saying too about revamping process was really trying to find ways to better support and better equip teams who travel from Canada. We are always wanting to do our best to support.
My brothers, I have a question for you. It's good to see you again. Couple of questions, actually. The first is, you're doing the vocational school now in Los Arca Rizos. And then what are the next steps there that you're looking at doing? And then the second question is, you mentioned early on about the bus, another truck to get people and deliver water and stuff. So how much money are you looking at and what community are you looking at for that?
Mr. Dave, it's always good to see you. I like the hall. I I might do it as well. So it's, it's, it's Villar de Gracia, you know, the the community where we have been traveling and where we have been in. And so that's the, that's the work that there is, needs to be done right now. And as I was saying, we need to do the 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 wall of the first two classrooms. And then it goes with the with the roof. So we got the plan with a couple of teams from Michigan coming to to do that. And then the the truck is to deliver water a little bit to, like Felix said, to spread and go to other places. Because we have the capacity on the water purification system. And that was the intention from the get go to have, to get a big enough water purification system that we can go to other, other communities that are, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes from us with with both, with the jugs of five gallon water, but also with the bottles of water that are the one that really maintain the water purification system. So the with the jog, we take it to the families a cost. And and the pastors, you know, make five, five cents of a dollar. So a pastor is making thirteen, fifteen American dollars or twenty or so Canadian in a day when we take the water to to them. But the 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 bottles making us the money so we can fund those essential water, which are the jugs. So with that truck, we were able to, we would be able to go to those stores, those a little bit farther a community. And we are talking about thirty five thousand Canadian dollars for that truck, for that truck. Thank you.
Biggest prayer request, Christian, it's good to see you.
It's good to see you again.
What's your biggest prayer request, top three?
I think that the first one is for the pandemic to keep, you know, going down in the Dominican like it has been. We went from having seventy to seventy five to eighty deaths in a day. There's one day that we did eighty two to go as low as zero in one or 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 like I said, zero in a day. So for the pandemic to keep going down like that to for this new creation of the pandemic, not to not to not to hit as hard as people think it will be. I think that that's a big prayer request. For sure, the truck that Felix was mentioning, it's something that I'm here, you know, talking every day in the States. And 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 for sure, for the for the teams to to return. And as you see, all of that has to do with the, you know, I mean, not all of that, but most of it with the fundraising and how to maintain what what is going on at the lighthouse. Because thanks to people like Felix, Johani, at the administration office and the stuff like that, the the directors of each area, things are going. It looks like lately, my job has been more like, you know, raising the funds for things to continue. So for example, I I I haven't had to go as much as I used to go to each project because Felix now is in charge of that project. So that's why I'm talking more about like those, those areas where where I'm very involved. Any other question?
This has been really fantastic, Christian. Thank you for for sharing. Thanks, everyone, for wonderful questions. Love that we got to hear about how the ministry, how the the sharing of the gospel really works through this program. And really, it's about loving and caring and meeting needs in the community, which is is so awesome. Really what Jesus calls us to do, right? One thing I wanted to do this evening is to share an opportunity to give with you. Christian doesn't necessarily ask for the money, but I'm going to ask for the money. What you've heard tonight, these amazing stories, talk about the, just show the importance of of this program and how it's changing lives, how it's supporting families. And and we have this need for ongoing support, even when our Canadian teams aren't able to travel. Hopefully, we can find ways of continuing to support Christian and Felix and the ministry at Impact Dominican. And so what we have in the month of November, you may have received some information already about that if you're with our Canadian partners. In the month of November, we have a matching campaign for anyone who signs up as either a new monthly donor or who signs up to add or increase their monthly donation. So our monthly donations really are the pulse, the heartbeat of the program. Sending monthly income just helps to guarantee stability with the program. And so tonight, my my ask is, is that you might consider any small amount in terms of a monthly donation. Your, our matching campaign allows those donations to be matched for three months. So if you're currently a monthly donor and you bump your donation up by five dollars, that gets tripled. And so it's a way to make our money go a little bit further. And we have generous donors who have offered that. There will be upcoming opportunities to donate to specific individual projects, like we've been talking about the vocational school as well. So keep your eyes open for that. Yeah, Jacob, have I missed anything?
No, but it ends tomorrow. It ends tomorrow, I'm giving Tuesday. So yes, there's still time.
There is still time. So once again, really so thankful for the opportunity. I would love to to closer time here in prayer, just offering this time to God and thanking God for our opportunity to get together. Yeah, Lord Jesus, we just thank you so much for the opportunity to meet together, to hear updates, to continue to be, to be inspired and blessed by the work in the ministry of Impact Dominican and the Lighthouse School. God, we just continue to uphold our Dominican brothers and sisters in prayer. We ask that opportunities for us to travel would open up. But also, Lord, we we take hold of and we we hold on to these opportunities that we can give and that we can give, give of our time and of our money to support the ongoing ministry. Lord, thank you so much again for this opportunity. And we just praise you in your name I pray, amen.
Amen. Gracias, muchas gracias, gracias.
Gracias amigo.
We love you, Kelly.